Good evening. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular live monthly meeting on Wednesday, October 25th at 6:00 P.M. Coram for this meeting is four. I will now call the following elected commissioners. Zone one, Jim Vigliotti.
Here.
Zone two Commissioner Dion Francis is not here tonight. Zone three Commissioner, myself Harold Watson, is here. Zone four Commissioner Deborah Lamberty.
Here.
Is here. And Zone five Commissioner Len Petricelli is here. Sitting in for Dion Francis tonight is our alternate Linda Manos.
Here.
And also we have Rich Fredette here as an alternate should we need him. We also welcome Jay Havansky, our Planning and Zoning Administrator; Gail DeCilio, our Recording Secretary; Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel. In addition tonight we have petitioners, Mr. Bellis and -- but let me just finish this. Public may only speak at the invitation of the Chair during both administrative and public hearings. Please text to request. With that said, I call to order this monthly session of Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00 P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five zero. We will now move to open the petitioner's public meeting. Be noted for the record that Ms. Manos is an alternate member sitting in for Mr. Francis. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more than time than anticipated, the public hearing may conclude at 10:00 P.M. and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 10:00 P.M. tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on October 11th and October 18th. Mr. Vigliotti, will you read the first Commissioner? We're going to take all three together, I believe.
Real.
It's the same parties.
Text amendment, petition of T&amp;J Realty Incorporated and Blake Stratford LLC seeking to create a new Section 28 title Paradise Green District to allow for construction of a 12-unit affordable housing development in a C.A. zone. 3589 Main Street, petition, T&amp;J Realty Incorporated and Blake Stratford LLC seeking a change of zone from a C.A. to Paradise Green District. 3589 Main Street, petition of T&amp;J Realty Incorporated and Blake Stratford LLC seeking a site plan review under the proposed Section 28 to construct a two-and-a-half-story 12-unit housing development pursuant to Section 830-G of the Connecticut General Statute in a C.A. zone.
Tonight we have two people speaking. Please give your name and your address.
Sure. I am Attorney Stephen Bellis. My work address is the Pellegrino Law Firm at 475 Whitney Avenue in New Haven, Connecticut, and I'm a resident of Shelton. I represent the applicant, T&amp;J Realty, Inc., and Blake Stratford LLC, and I just want to give the clerk the notice that we gave of this proceeding of the hearing.
I don't know if you were here when I'd spoken with your partner here. If you can direct as many of your comments as possible to the administrative report and also the zoning -- I mean, the planning reports, so that we know that -- how much of those have you managed to cover? If there are any things that are still open, we can try to limit ourselves to that discussion.
So, as the Chairman has indicated, there is a -- it's already -- this is a C.A. zone, and in order to proceed, we have filed what we call a change of zone, and that change of zone is allowed under 8-30-G of the Connecticut General Statutes. So, under that particular statute, as long as it's not in an industrial zone, we could make the application. So, that's why there's first application, or one of the applications, is to seek a change of zone from C.A. to another zone. So, it's a zone change application. We have then -- you say, "Well, what zone are you changing it to?" So, we're changing it to a zone that we have created under what we call the text amendment. So, that's the second petition or application. And the text amendment is creating a new Section 28 that will go in your zoning regulations, and it's entitled Paradise Green District. So, that's the new zone. And then the third application, which I'll get to, is what we call a site plan, to explain the site to you. So, I'll be brief. Under 8-30-G, we are proposing what we call a set-aside development. A set-aside development simply means that 30 percent of the units are considered affordable under the state statute or state regulations. So, in this particular case, we're asking for 12 units, so four of them would be under affordable. Under a set-aside development of those four units, two of them will be for people that earn what they call 60 percent of the median income in our area, and the other two for people that earn 80 percent of the median income in our area. Our area is considered Bridgeport, and to the best of my knowledge, I am rounding numbers, Commissioner, but it's approximately $100,000. So, if someone were to earn $60,000 or less, they could apply for two of the units, and if someone were earning $80,000 or less, they can apply for the other two units. So, that's what a set-aside development is. The rest of the units are what we consider fair market value. So, in the text amendment, which I've handed out, it basically just spells out when -- what it is that you can have in this particular zone, and what the setbacks are, and what the height of the building, what the width and depth, all those kinds of things are spelled out. So, in this particular case, we've listed all those things, and if, when we go over the site plan, you find that the site plan complies with this text amendment, then you can approve the site plan as well as the text amendment. So, let's go back for a step. So, I am requesting a change of the zone, and under 830-G, as you're all kind of familiar with, it is allowed, or it's permitted, to request a zone change, and the Commission can only deny those if they can show that there's a substantial reason or problem with the project that outweighs the need for affordable housing. Now, I think in this case, I don't -- I'm not aware of any substantial problems or issues that would outweigh the need for affordable housing because on this particular application, we already have an existing structure on the parcels. It's on -- obviously, it's on Main Street, which is a -- an existing road. It has sewer water and electricity. There's no wetlands on this particular parcel. There's no environmental concerns. So, the typical reasons where an applicant may have problems, I don't think exists for this particular kind of application because the application is one in which we're taking existing structures, demolishing them and removing them, and putting up a new structure. So, as far as the zone change is concerned, I think that that would be something that, unless you tell me something differently, I think would be appropriate for an approval. So, then we have the -- if that is the case, we then take a look at the text amendment and make sure that the site plan complies with it. So, I'll just go through a little bit with the site plan, and then I will have Nick Owen go over, as the Commissioner had requested, the architecture, the floor plans for the building, and the parking, and those kinds of things. But basically, if I recall, the -- you can see up here, we have a building that is proposed on the site that will have 12 apartment units. They'll all be one-bedroom units. The footprint is a little different than the existing structures, but that is something that it fits within, obviously, the parcels owned by my client. There will be 16 parking spaces added with the additional 30 spaces that are on the adjacent property for the overflow if needed. So, if we look at the text amendment, you will see that -- and the -- that there's what we call an affordability plan that's attached to it. And the affordability plan, it is rather lengthy, but what it basically says is that the person will abide by the Connecticut State Regulations as far as qualifying people for this particular four units that are being set aside, and then the rest of them are fair market value.
May I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, sure.
Because we're -- that's something I know our housing partnership is working on.
Yeah.
We've lost some of our affordable status because we have not -- we did not have the proper administration of it.
Okay.
There's a move to insist that all developers go through the approved state list of vendors for that kind of --
Yeah. I think I follow what you're saying. Yeah.
Jay, if you want to speak to this for a second, you probably can explain it better than I can.
I'm sorry, I was reading --
I understand.
I was reading a note. This is regarding the affordability administrator you said?
The administration of the affordability status.
So, we have a list from the Department of Housing of recommended affordability managers, and there's a handful of them that are -- administrate the affordability -- or the folks moving into these developments in town, and it's worked rather well. So, I think, you know, you could always reach out to me, and I'm happy to share that list.
Yeah. To answer your question, Jay pointed that out to me when I submitted my first draft, and I made the correction in the zoning reg itself to state that it would be someone that -- on that list that Jay has just mentioned. So, you will have the proper person administering this, and I put it in the reg.
Thank you.
Reg meaning regulation.
Thank you. And one other thing is, my understanding is, we're not dealing with three properties or two properties. We're dealing with one property.
Yes. It's one property.
So, you were including the 16 spaces in what I called a subway lot. It's not -- it's
No. I think that -- I think I was talking about the 30, the other 30.
You were including that as an overflow lot, which currently, right now, that is not the same property as what we're talking about. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah. So, there is -- well, there's parking on-site, and then there's the possibility of additional parking. Yes. That is correct. So, I'm not going to go through all this because it's --
Do me a favor. Give me an estimation. How much of this is boilerplate?
A lot of it.
From the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, point out what is different.
Okay. Different. I talked about set-aside developments, so you know what the -- everyone should know what that is. We talked about the requirement that this regulation would only pertain to 3589 Main Street, Stratford, so it doesn't apply to any other location in town. Their structure would have only 12 units, that there'd be a dumpster with an enclosure, either opaque fencing or something, some other kind of consistent material, and that there would be parking spaces for 16 motor vehicles. That is not boilerplate. The density and all the, what I call bulk standards, those are all not standard. So, those would be the ones that apply in this particular case. The parking spaces are eight feet, five inches by 19 feet. That's --
Which is not our current zoning.
It is not.
So, you're asking for something different than what we'd normally do?
Slightly different. Yes, you are correct in that regard.
And have you run that by?
I mentioned it to Jay. Yeah.
Is that something that'll have to go to approval? As long as we accept this, they'll?
Yeah, as long as you accept this, and, you know, when they get their -- assuming that the project gets approved, it gets a building permit, it'll have to pass engineering. You know, compact -- a compact parking space is smaller than this.
Yeah.
So, I think it would -- I think it would be okay.
Okay. I'm going to reserve having Nick go over the floor plan and elevations because that has to do with the architecture, if you don't mind.
Can you, though? I don't know. So, where are you in your document?
I'm almost done. I'm on page five.
Okay. Can you go back to page four?
Sure.
There were change -- there were suggestions to you that you changed from 94 percent closer to 80 percent, which is what our current and our forthcoming P.O.C.D. is asking for.
Yeah. Yes, Nick -- Jay did make that --
Were you able to make any kind of movement in that direction?
Uh... Excuse me a second, sir.
Go ahead.
I'm aware of the issue. Jay made me aware of it. It's not like I mentioned it to our engineer to see if he could do something. The only thing that I -- that we came up with was perhaps making some of the parking spaces be, you know, less impervious, but I don't know the --
You could use pervious pavement. They do --
Yes. Jay told me about that.
Yeah. They use a lot of them in Cape Cod.
Yeah. I mean, that could be a condition that you might add. Yeah. I wasn't familiar with it.
Well, honestly, that's something that we, as a town, are getting hit with because we have to increase our pervious pavement every year.
Yeah.
From here out.
Yeah. I get it.
So, we're under pressure. We're going to be asking every -- anybody on the parking
The only good news is, they really can't criticize you on this 830-G application for those kind of issues, but, you know.
You're hopeful.
I'm just -- yeah. But I understand the issue. So, that -- I do get it. So, the answer to your question is, I don't think I have it down to 80 percent at this point.
Anything below 94?
That might work. Yeah. So, what else? Planting areas, all that kind of stuff is standard. I told you that Nick will go over the architecture. Yeah. I mean, there's no wetlands, so we don't have to worry about that.
You're putting in bike racks, I understand.
I'm sorry?
You're putting in bike racks.
Yeah, that was requested, so the answer is yes. Yeah. So, we did make some changes based on Jay's letter to me. I can't say that we changed everything, but I tried to do most of the ones that I thought I could. So, the next thing after the text amendment, if -- that would be the new regulation that goes in your book, but the good news is, it only applies to this particular piece of property. It can't be used anywhere else. So, then you just look at the site plan, and that's -- then the board kind of acts in what I call an administrative sense and says, "Okay, is this a two-story building? Is there 12 units? Are there 16 parking spaces?" And if the answer to all those questions are yes, then under this particular plan, the site plan is approved with the petition for text amendment and zone change. So, there would only be this one hearing is what -- and I heard you say, "We're putting all these together," and that was the correct way to do it. You should keep them all together. So, those are my talking points on the legalities of what we're trying to do. If there are specific questions about the project, Nick or I can answer it, but I'll have Nick go over some of the -- so, just to let you know, I hate to say this because everyone gets upset. Zoning doesn't normally deal with architecture normally, right? Zoning deals with -- I look at -- Jay doesn't like that. Yeah.
Yeah. Let me stop you there.
Yeah.
We -- I'm serious.
Yeah.
We have been trying to increase the visual quality of Stratford.
Yes. I've been here enough to realize that. That's why I cautioned it.
We've worked very hard for the last three or four years.
Yeah. You've done a good job, too.
Making our ARB be a real institution.
Yeah. So...
It is heavily weighed in our P.O.C.D. now.
Yeah.
And it will be in our zoning -- our new zoning regs coming up this year.
Yeah. No, I get that.
So, we should not do anything that diminishes what they're doing.
Yeah. I don't say -- I'm not diminishing what you're trying to do. I get it. I'm just telling you, case law-wise, that zoning deals with zoning issues, and unless it's a PDD, which is a planned development district, or unless your zoning regulations, which you may have in the future, say, "Listen, we want you to consider architecture," you know. But anyway, we went to the Architectural Review Board.
We do that all -- we do do that on many, many projects.
I know you do.
We had many meetings about what the visual aspect of it is.
Yeah. And I get it. You would want to know.
Okay.
Yeah. I get it. So, we have no problem. We went to the Architectural Review Board. There were comments made, and that's why I wanted Nick to go over that with you, and I do -- listen, I appreciate you want to know what it looks like and what the final product's going to look like. I get that. So, we did go to the Architectural Review Board. They can -- Nick can come up and talk a little bit about what's proposed in -- for the actual building at site, the materials used, and the way it looks on the site. And then he can go over with you any questions you have on the architecture. So, I'm just asking you to hold off on those for Nick, okay? Anything other than architecture you want to talk to me about?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You said you have 12 spots in the --
12 units.
Okay. But 30 additional parking spots. Where are they located?
The owner has -- I'm not good with directions. You know if it's east or west. Oh, okay. Nick will go over that with you. Yeah.
They can't.
It's adjacent to the site. That's a good question. I'll make sure we get that answered. Yeah.
I just want to make a comment. The parking that is right now in the subway lot cannot be included in your estimation of what you're suggesting. The overflow. The overflow.
Overflow. Yeah. There are existing spaces on the site.
I understand, but that's not part of this property that we're considering. So, we need to -- we need to consider what's on this property.
Yeah. I get that. That's why I said there's 16.
Does it make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's 16 spaces.
Go ahead.
I agree. It's in the regs. I wrote 16. I didn't talk about the overflow, but that's something that may be a practical thing, is what I'm talking about. Yeah. Any other questions from -- for me?
Did you do any kind of traffic study?
No.
For this intersection here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Generally speaking, a 12-unit apartment building is not what we call a high generator of traffic, so that's why we did not do it.
And Jay, may I ask, is that within bounds?
I would say that's a -- it's subjective. You know, we had a 800 -- or 1,200-square-foot retail facility that came to us recently that -- small, 10 parking spaces, and they did traffic study. So, you know, it really is up to your determination. The zoning commission can always require -- can request the applicant to produce one and come back the following month, but I think it might be appropriate to kind of hear out. You can ask your questions, let the applicant respond, and then you make your decision, kind of based on what you're hearing.
I agree with Jay. If it were a retail or commercial establishment, I would have performed a traffic study because there generally is more traffic going in and out, you know, if it's a bank or a gas station. But with residential, what the traffic engineers generally have told me over the years is there are peak hours in the morning, peak hours in the evening, when people are more likely to come in and out, and that's what they base their traffic studies on. So, on a 12-unit apartment, there's not going to be much traffic.
I don't know if you're aware, and I know that your partner must be, that we use our Paradise Green for all kinds of events.
Sure you do.
And then we end up having to station a police officer at the corner of Main Street and Paradise.
Yeah. I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
Paradise, that little -- the road that you're coming --
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For the concerts or whatever you may have there. Yeah.
Yeah. So, when that happens, usually...
I agree. Those -- on those times, they're -- yeah. People are trying to get to the event. Yeah.
And park.
And park. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
We have the same problem at the Huntington Green in Shelton, so I know what you're talking about. Any other questions for me?
Ladies, gentlemen, anybody?
I'd like Nick to go back, and then I'll come back.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Linda, anything?
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm not clear.
Yeah.
We're having a disagreement. Sorry. We should have shared it. This building is the one that has the hair salon. There's some -- that's that one building. It has nothing to do with Subway. It's between Subway and 7-Eleven. Isn't that the building? Because that's what I assume the address is.
Correct. It has a nail salon. It has a hair wig parlor or something like that.
Right. And then there's a little --
And then behind that, there's almost like a residential -- looks like a residential building that was built off of it. It's the yellow building.
Right.
That's the one you're talking about.
Yep.
You're right.
But we're not counting the parking where Subway is as part of this.
We're only -- the applicant has only proposed the 16 parking spaces to accommodate the 12 residential units on-site. They are just anecdotally, I believe, and they can confirm this. They're anecdotally referencing that the owner of this site owns, bookends this site. They also own it, and they're saying, "Well, we've got additional parking there that if we could use if we needed to." But you're only considering 16 parking spaces for 12 units on just this site.
It's planned out to be. Okay. Because I'm very familiar with the property on the left where the Subway is because my daughter used to live in that building. The dentist used to be downstairs, and then when the dentist moved out, they put two more apartments. So, there's two upstairs and two downstairs in that yellow building right near the funeral home. So, you know, so that's what my question was. Okay.
Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission.
Sir, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Owen. I have business offices located at 972 East Broadway here in Stratford, and I am part of the development team for Mr. Blake's property on Paradise Green. And before I get into my spiel and chief here, I want to further indicate to you that Mr. Blake owns -- I don't want to mess your last name. Is it Lamberty?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Lamberty. Mr. Blake owns from actually the Paradise Place. I think that's the name of the street. I'm not sure.
Yes.
Paradise Green Place. He owns that property on the corner that you briefly spoke about. I think it was last year or the year before I came in and converted that building to all apartments. We redid the outside. We did it all. We think it came out very well. Now, this particular piece is adjoining in between another piece that he owns, so I'm going to call it, for argument's sake, all continuous ownership, even though it may be under two or three different LLCs. The property in question this evening, the petition we're here for, is under one LLC, but Mr. Blake and his company, who is the sole owner along with his son, owns all of the property to Paradise Green Place. Now, the Chairman did indicate that there are certain times a year where the town puts on functions and it becomes congested. That is true. But in other situations where there are functions all year long or off and on all year on some other shopping centers, the traffic is horrendous no matter where you go, whether it's Stratford, Milford, Trumbull, Devon, Fairfield. It's -- so, it's kind of mixed knots, but we cannot figure our parking situation based on those extraordinary circumstances. There are 19 parking spots specifically on this particular development that we're attempting to get approved this evening. It is more than enough parking for this venture. However, even though you may not be able to include them, there are cross-parking agreements amongst the companies that Mr. Blake owns personally and TJ Realty, which Mr. Blake owns, and those were placed on the land records when we did the project and converted the corner building from dentists and commercial downstairs to apartments. So, all of that parking on that property is used in conjunction. However, specifically, each one of those properties supports itself under either a former parking regulation or a current parking regulation, and our parking on this particular site, with the 19 spaces, certainly conforms in excess of what 830-G and the state of Connecticut requires. So, that kind of nails it down to plenty of parking for this particular piece of property and this project. Now, I did have -- Jay can correct me if I'm wrong. We have been working on this petition for a number of months. I would say almost eight, nine months, and I had several meetings with Jay, and we went over a lot of things, and that was based on my appearing before the Architectural Review Committee, and we, in fact, appeared before that committee twice. The first meeting was very contentious. It ended up very loud. It ended up with one of the Commissioners who did not like the design of the property. And I should indicate to you, good people, at least two or three of the members of the Architecture Review Committee are architects. Mr. Blake has an architect. Two or three members on the Architecture Review are architects. Every architect looks at things a little bit different, and the way I looked at it when I listened to some of the arguments at that first hearing is, whatever happened to property rights and the rights of a person who actually owns the property, where he would or they would have to be dictated specifically to do certain things in order to get approval? However, at the end of the meeting, we left, and the Commission, thankfully, thanks to Sussmita, that one of the -- However, at the end of the meeting, we left, and the commission, thankfully, uh, thanks to Sismita, that, one of the, um, uh, the planning administrator, uh, the, the commission sat down and they drew, they drew a picture. And in your packet, you will see a hand-drawn picture. I don't know if you can locate it. And I would like you to take a look at it because I'd like to speak to it. Now, if, if you see that, that is something that they drew up based on the fact that everyone had a different opinion as to what this building will look like, or should look like, or what some individuals on that commission wanted it to look like. So what we did is we went back to the drawing board and we made, I would say, ninety-five percent of the changes, alterations, and/or corrections, and some of the designs that they wanted, and as far as I'm concerned, we are almost in full, and I hate to use the word compliance, because they are only an advisory agency, they don't have a vote in this matter, although as the chairman pointed out, that this commission is looking to see if they could adopt this, uh, as a formal, as a formal board and therefore include all of the recommendations in, uh, in, uh, subsequent approvals, uh, once, once the new book comes out with zoning regulations, however...
Mr. Owen, may I stop you for one sec, just to give you some background, our Architecture Review Board is working to implement our plan of conservation and development.
Okay.
So, that is within the district of the Paradise District, which runs down to Barnum. That area is, in general, how that whole area shall be developed. One of the things it asked for is, uh, apartments on second floor and retail on the first floor. There are very specific things in there that, reading through their notes, a lot of what they were covering was simply what is, what they consider for the whole district.
Correct, I understand that.
Okay.
In this, in this particular situation, since you brought it up, um, there, as far as we're concerned, we looked at this, and Mr. Blake has looked at it too, because he owns a number of retail storefronts in that, in that Paradise Green area, in these three or four properties that he owns on Paradise Green. There is more than enough retail and commercial space in Paradise Green. There are always vacancies, I counted three vacancies today, when I took a final review of what we were going to look at today and what, what I thought we might be able to talk about. Um, a lot of those properties, I shouldn't say a lot, about twenty percent of those properties have apartments on the second floor. Those would be the newer development, the newer properties on that, the things that, uh, where Paradise Pizza's, that chickless developed. Uh, most of the, um, most of the buil, most of the buildings are of, um, of an older storefront, um, uh, and some of those people that own those properties are now dressing them up and making it look better. As far as additional development, other than rehabbing what you have, or tearing those properties down, or tearing certain structures down, there is no room to really build anything quote-unquote "brand new." Now, this particular property that we're talking about tonight has a, has two buildings on it, actually it has a storefront with a flat roof on it, it has a house in the back. Now, those two properties are the original properties that Mr. Blake Senior, Terry's father, uh, purchased way back when. Matter of fact, Mr. Blake was a very good friend of mine, uh, and he was, um, he owned the pharmacy at one point, and he owned a travel agency and an insurance agency. So, those buildings, if my memory serves me correctly, correctly, are somewhere in the nineteen thirties were built. The, uh, building in question that we want to take down, this project, uh, is starting to deteriorate beyond repair. Although, that is not the main reason that we are here, we are here to enhance the value of that property, and we feel the property can support, uh, an eight thirty G, twelve, twelve units, uh, the four being affordable as Attorney Bellis have indicated, two at sixty, two at eighty percent of the, um, requirements under the statute. Now, it may be a little bit hard to read or to decipher of what the, um, Architecture Review Committee had indicated, however, in some of Jay's, Jay had, uh, given us some comments, uh, that I'd like to go over, and I'm not sure that the comments that were returned to him, although they may have been, from our architect, covered each and every one of them, and we made corrections, and we made alterations to the plan in order to think, in order to comply with the recommendations from not only the Architecture Review Committee, but also from, uh, Jay and his staff. Now, if you want me to go through each one of these, I'm more than happy to do that, uh, however, um... Yeah, I can do that, if that's, if you want me to take the time to do that, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Please do.
That would be, uh, the, um, uh, the Zoning Commission Planning Staff Review dated October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah, let me, let me just find it. Sorry. It's here somewhere. Yes. Staff review.
It would be the staff review of October...
Not planning, it's zoning staff review. Sorry, give me one moment, cause I...
Sure.
It's two different documents, I think, correct?
It's for the site plan review of the twelve-unit development.
October.
There are multiple sets, there are multiple applications. That's the one.
Okay. Sorry.
I, I think it, it starts out with application and the first line is thirty-five eighty-nine Main Street, petition of TJ Realty, yes.
Site plan review.
Right, yes.
Yes.
If you'd like me to go over that, I'll be more than happy to.
I, I...
I can tell you this, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, um, generally speaking, I agree with everything that Jay had indicated that might need to be looked at. We looked at it, we corrected it, and we agree with it. Uh, I could go specifically to two things that, um, that I want to. Uh, one of the, um, uh, John Casey, town engineer, did make a comment, and I can read his comment regarding the development at the above address, the... I just had my eyes done and I still can't see right. Uh, he was concerned about the drainage, and there were two ways to do the drainage under the current, uh, under the current statutes, under, uh, MS four, retainage requirements, that you keep your runoff and drainage on the property, there are two ways to do it, either by, uh, pervious brick in some situations, or by, uh, dry wells and stone, uh, pipe to catch basins that are retained in the property. We leave that open, however, our, our druthers is to, uh, do the, um, uh, the drainage tanks underground underneath the parking, and in a conversation with Mr. Casey today, he said it did not make any difference to him, as long as we complied with the, um, with the standard MS four.
But it would make a difference in terms of pervious pavement.
It would make a difference...
If you're trying to go from ninety-two down to eighty...
I understand.
It would make a big difference if you were to take some of the parking and, and go that way. So you would be able to kill that, that problem.
Well, we would like to do it either, we would like to do the retainage tanks. Now, if the commission feels differently, or you give us an option, or we can do some of each, we are not opposed to doing some of each. However, you should be aware that a design, if this is approved, obviously has to be submitted to the engineering department. John, Mr. Casey will look at it, John will look at it and say yea or nay, or you need to make some corrections to do this. So, you are not the only board that would have a final say in that. However, uh, if you would be kind enough, if you decide to approve this projects, the project to give us the eternity of either one or the other, or half and half, or mix it up, so it meets some of the standards that you would like to see, but yet protect our property rights also. Ninety, ninety-nine percent of this site, and the entire piece, the pieces that Mr. Blake owns up there, not only his pieces, but all of the pieces in Paradise Green, with the exception of, uh, a little landscaping in the front and some on the sides of the building, it's all pavement. There's no room for anything else, because parking is, parking is pretty much maxed out in Paradise Green, there's no question about that. Uh, the parking behind the building on the other side, you can go behind those parking lots anytime, day or night, and a lot of people just don't feel like getting out of their car and walking. They would rather circle the wagons and go out and wait till somebody pulls out and park in a space. But on this, on this project, on a Mr. Blake's project, he's got plenty of parking. Uh, another indication that you made that, uh, and I also referenced, uh, slightly to initially was, uh, there are a lot of functions in that gazebo, there's a lot of functions in that green area. You should know, and it's important, and the mayor's office knows, that Mr. Blake allows those people that attend those functions to park on his property each and every time without question. So, he's a good citizen, so he deserves consideration on something, on a petition such as this, which is not an overwhelming request for him to make, and we think it's a good adjunct to the, um, uh, to Paradise Green. It would be great for people to live in Paradise Green, to shop in Paradise Green, to walk to Paradise Green, there is a bus stop, there's plenty of sidewalk room, there's plenty of transportation, and there's a lot of things that go on in Paradise Green during the, uh, during the, uh, the warm months, the spring, the summer, and the fall months. So there's plenty of activity on it, uh, to support a, a development such as this.
Mr. Owen, you, we agree with you more than you realize.
Thank you.
We are spending millions of dollars to increase the bike paths and the greenway all the way up beyond...
I understand.
Your current location, so...
One of the items...
That we care a lot about in Stratford.
One of the items that, um, I disagree with Jay with, and I generally disagree with the commission with, is, um, bike racks. Paradise Green in the summer is loaded with kids on their bicycles that make a mess. Now, I understand that you'd like to see bike racks, if you specifically require it, we will do it, we prefer that we put no more bike racks in Paradise Green to have kids park their bikes in the bike racks, and open their bubble gum and throw their garbage all over the place, including on this proposed project if it gets approved. I think there is enough, uh, bike traffic there, and if you're concerned that the people that will eventually rent won't have a spot for a bike, they can bring their bicycles upstairs to their apartment and park them there. Now, that's my statement, you can disagree with me, I'm telling you why we don't want it.
And you know that I will.
It doesn't mean that you don't, that you do want it. And I see Mr. Hibansky smirking.
No kids, no kids allowed.
I know you did. I'm sorry, what? The what? No kids allowed. Now, I know Attorney Bellis put it into regulation, so, so be it. You can waive that portion of the regulation, or you can say, uh, hey Nick, guess what, you're going to do bike racks. Now, the one contention that I had with Architecture Review, and I'm going to term it as the cowboy look of the building. If you take a look at that, that hand-drawn picture, you will see, on the front of that building is somewhat of a parapet, which is a flat line across the top of it, and we want to do a pitched roof. Uh, Mr. Hibansky sent me pictures of, uh, of roof lines that looked very nice, they were all flat, and it looked to me, and I think I emailed him back and said, I said, uh, something to the effect, thank you very much, it looked like Chicago in the nineteen thirties, with all the flat roofs during the Al Capone days. But if they want a small parapet put in the front of that building, so it faces the street, we can do that, and we can lower the pitch on a pitched roof. We will not do a flat roof, it's too much maintenance, it's too much requirements, there are always leaks, I don't care how well it's done, uh, the maintenance is tremendous on buildings like this. Although, Paradise Green has a lot of flat roofs, but there's also a number of pitched roof too. So if you want a cowboy look in front, we can do a cowboy look in front, but I really don't want to do it.
So you're essentially talking, they're really just truss work?
Yes.
You're going to order a truss with an angle?
Yes.
So that's a discussion that can continue, I assume, up until you order, not a penny difference in terms of what it's doing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And, and just to clarify, the, the message that was delivered to Mr. Owen was a message from the Architecture Review Board that I just happened to agree with. And so I think that what the, what the applicant has stated is that they're willing to install a faux parapet wall that makes, that achieves the design recommendation given by the Architecture Review Board, that still allows them to have any kind of roof system that they want hidden back behind it. It's, it's just a design element, that's all it really is. So they, they certainly could have a parapet wall out front, uh, in their pitched roof, hidden back behind it. It's, it's done almost all the time, we did it on two thousand and nine, uh, Main Street, the old Christ Church property, that was quite similar. They have faux, faux, uh, dental work around the top edge, but it's pitched back behind it, you just cannot see it. So, I just wanted to clarify.
Did you hear that?
Uh, um, yes, I did.
Okay.
And, okay.
They also said, no, they didn't want shutters, so you, you put shutters on every single window, so...
And we will take them off. Now, the other thing is, they wanted us to do sometime, uh, some kind of a brick planter in front, or a stone planter in front, which we did. We aligned the windows, we aligned the doors.
And they wanted you to move it south, or I'm going to, they wanted you to move it closer to the Paradise Green.
Which we did.
Did you?
Yes.
So you still have a walkway on that side?
Yes. There's enough room for a walkway.
Okay, and windows?
Yes.
In terms of fire, fire code?
But we will, there was, and, uh, even though that, um, you want that little parapet roof in front, they wanted it, we're willing to do that if we have to. There was no reason to do it on either side, because you cannot see that from the street at all.
Can you just explain for me, so I understand, where the, which way the building has shifted on the site plan? Cause I don't think I've received a revised site plan showing an alternate, uh, location. Has it been shifted to the south towards...
Paradise Green.
Towards Paradise Green? By several feet?
Where is the walk? Is the walk on the driveway side now, or is it still on the... The walk is still there.
So the building didn't change?
And the driveway...
The building did not move.
Cause you had five feet there, from what I could tell, I was guessing.
This, and you know what, thinking about, it was, there was a reason why we didn't, I misspoke, and I apologize. We may want to make sure we have enough room for fire appar, fire apparatus, apparatus, which is made in here. And we've already spoken to the fire department, and as long as we don't get any closer, we're in good shape. And, not only is that, they can go from here, around here, out the back, and there is a cutout here, and you could see it on your plan, I don't know if you could see it on the smaller plan, but on the bigger one, so that there's three outlets, out to here, out through the funeral home, and out again through Main Street.
There is a, there's an exit through into the, the forward lot?
Yes.
Now?
Yeah.
That, that was on your original plan?
Yes.
That we had seen, okay.
I'm not sure that the Architecture Review Committee, uh, had any other real negative comments. Uh, we agree with, we, as I indicated, we agree with most of what they said, and we are doing it, our plans, uh, show that, and we are willing to make that as stipulations of an approval if you so choose to approve this development.
So you don't care about the shutters?
I don't care about the shutters.
You're willing to change the shape of the roof, low, honestly, this is my, I went down and looked, I, I was concerned about what it would look like from Paradise Green with the building standing behind the existing one-story buildings. If you would lower it, lower it two feet even, you'd still have enough grade for snow.
See, what we, what we initially thought, Mr. Chairman, first, that we would like to, we wanted this property to be a bookend, and look similar to the one that we did on Paradise Green Place a couple of years ago. In other words, two residential-looking buildings, although the one on Paradise Green Place is residential, and the apartment building, if approved, would look residential, so it would kind of sandwich that in into the commercial space. That was the idea behind it. Uh, obviously, Architecture Review Committee didn't agree with it.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The two charging stations?
I'm sorry?
The two charging stations?
Absolutely not.
Oh, you're not doing it?
No.
Okay.
No, they are forty-five thousand dollars each to install.
Mr. Owen, we are start, we are right now writing regulations that are going to require that in, in parking lots, because...
That's awful, that is awful.
Well, five years from now, you're going to need it, your people that live there are going to need it.
Mr. Chairman, I got to tell you, this, this country is, uh, way ahead of itself on certain things, and that's one of them. We do not have the infrastructure yet to support the number of electric vehicles they are going to try to throw on this road, and to have people spend money on commercial establishments to turn around and put charging stations in. In fact, a number of meetings ago, it could have been last year, uh, the commission denied charging stations on, uh, I think it was the, the Marshall Shopping Center.
No, we did that very specifically because there was advertising...
BJ's.
There were giant advertising billboards that went with them, that's what we denied.
I, I just don't believe that you can expect mom-and-pop type operations to put forty-five thousand dollars... I, I just don't believe that you can expect mom-and-pop type operations to put $45,000 apiece into charging stations. I really can't. I really can't.
Len? Did you get your?
I was just observing.
Anybody else? Deborah, do you have anything?
I want someone to put a gas tank in my yard, you know?
Ms. Lambert, any questions?
I have a, I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert, did I just about step on words that you were gonna say?
The, what about the planning commission comments? You know, inconsistent with the POCD?
I was curious, I was curious about those comments. Wait, wait, and then you can answer illegally, whatever. I looked at them, and I said, "I'm not sure what they were looking at." And I had a conversation with Jay, and Jay, if I misspeak, please tell me. And he said they were based on Jay's comments, and they thought a lot of them, I shouldn't say a lot of them, that some of the comments, or corrective measures that Mr. Hibansky wanted me to take, were negative, therefore, they said they couldn't support the project.
So, not to confirm or disconfirm what Mr. Owen just said, essentially, the, the commission get, as submitted, the planning commission gave an unfavorable recommendation based on the text amendment as submitted. And now, the zoning commission can make the determination that the modifications that have been made, such as an, an independent affordability administrator, bicycle parking, reducing the impervious area, well, you may determine now with these modifications that it is indeed now consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So, you can react to the pivot of the applicant, and that, that's really up to you to make that determination. So, I, I certainly stand behind the planning commission's initial recommendation, however, I do feel that the applicant has made some adjustments to the text amendment that may shift, that may shift your opinion on that.
Yeah, I-
I hope that explains it.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Jay said. The only caveat would be that, I just wanna caution, this is an 8-30G application, so the case law says that it, the application does not have to be consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. Having said that, legally, we don't have to even look at it. That's not what we wanted to do, and so we tried to adjust, to make it more consistent. But legally, if we were ever to go to court, they'd just say, "Who cares?" You know, the courts don't care what your plan of conservation development says on 830G applications. It certainly matters on other zoning matters. But, I think, to Jay's point, there were some concerns, we tried to address them, and make it more consistent with your plan of conservation development, even though we didn't have to do it.
And, and I'll just add for the record, so, while we're discussing the planning commission's review, they did give an unfavorable recommendation, and so the implication of that, for this text amendment and zone change, is that it's typically a simple majority, three to two vote, in the affirmative to approve it. With the unfavorable recommendation, it's a supermajority. They need four votes in the affirmative for the zone change and the text amendment to approve this. Just to confirm.
That's correct.
We also looked at, again, and I have a few more remarks, and then I can take any question that you might have. We took a look, we know that we have to comply with whatever the Health Department requires us to do. We are gonna be on the san, town sanitary sewer system. If approved, we do know we have to go before the WPCA for approval to hook up to the sanitary sewers. We understand that. The health, safety, and general welfare of the public is not diminished by a development of this type. In fact, it brings more pedestrians and people to the Paradise Green area, and that's what we are, we're looking for. The location and design of the building, we think, is, is consistent with what is in that neighborhood, which, which is in Paradise Green, and we think it's harmonious with whatever is there, and in fact, we think it's gonna enhance it, and eliminate an old structure with a new structure, along with all of the other structures that have been upgraded, and those structures that are gonna be upgraded in the, in the future years. The circulation and traffic pattern, I indicated it to you, there's three ways in, three ways out. Fire department has no issues with it. We have not heard from the police department, we assume no comments, or no comments, and if they had an issue, in other cases, if they had an issue, they would submit the information to the zoning commission, to you people, and we have none. The proposed development protects the environment, there are no obnoxious fumes, there's no smells coming from the units, these are individual housing units, they're residential in nature. There are no, there's only one dumpster enclosed on the property, it will be enclosed, consistent with the Health Department and the zoning regulations, and we confirm with that. All of the utility systems, the electric will be underground. There will be no heating or air conditioning units sitting on the property, either on the roof or on the ground, they will all be internal into the units. These are specialized systems, and they are, they are state-of-the-art systems. The, all of the provisions that may be required by the Conservation Committee, or by Kelly Kerrigan, our Conservation Administrator, will be adhered to. I did speak with her briefly about this. What she would like to do is visit the site prior to construction, and indicate certain items that she would like to see or not like to see, as far as plantings, different species, different shrubs, and we have absolutely no issues with that. We, we spoke about the, the facade, the cowboy, the cowboy-looking facade. We reluctantly are willing to do that on the front, there, we don't see a need to do it on the side, since it's not seen from the street, nor is it seen from the back. The material that we will use on this, on this project, there will be a brick or stone-faced planter in the front, there will be upgraded, top-notch vinyl siding or vinyl shakes on the rest of the property. Now, I know that the, that sometimes the commission doesn't like that, however, they have approved these things in the past, and you cannot tell, with the vinyl design these days, and the texture, and the quality, what is wood, or what is vinyl, unless you are two feet away from it. So, for maintenance purposes, we will do that, vinyl-clad windows, low maintenance, and as little maintenance as, as possible on the outside of the property. Other than that, I'm happy to take any question that you might have, and I usually indicate during these, toward the end of my presentation, any question as mundane, or as silly, or as, I don't know, stupid, I hate to use the word, that thing might be, please ask it now, because if you end up in administrative session with a question, I cannot speak, I can't correct it if you misinterpret it, something I said, and I don't want you to misinterpret anything that I say here, because we are looking for approval this evening. And I thank you for your time.
Wait, anybody with questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Owens, you, I think you stated three times that there are 19 parking spaces?
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, it's 16.
Okay.
I apologize, sir.
Whoops. Thank you. That's all for-
Thank you.
I appreciate the question, I was gonna clarify that, so, he's right.
I'm gonna go down the list. Len? Anything? Deborah? Linda? Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, the, there is an entrance on Main Street, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then, is there another entrance? I'm trying to look at the plans here. Or is, or, or does the front entrance go to both floors?
No, this is not. Right, there's an entrance on Main Street right here, do you see it on your plan?
Yep. I'm looking at this, this little-
All right, you can come through here, you can go around here, and there is another entrance right here, on Paradise Green Place.
We should have that building entrance.
I'm sorry?
Entrance to the buil- Entrance to the building.
Entrance to, oh, just one entrance to this specific building.
Okay, there is just one?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And, and that's on Main Street?
That's correct.
Okay.
What is the, what is the entrance in back?
If you cross, if you cross properties, if you come down Fen, Paradise Green Place and go up and go around here, yes, you can get into the property. These are all contiguous, there's no fences in between these properties.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, in, in this building that we're looking here, I thought, reading the, reading the plan, it looked like that the back, five apartments, or six apartments came in the back entrance, and the front five or whatever apartments come in the front entrance.
As a pedestrian walking into the building?
Oh, as a pedestrian, yes, not as, not for cars.
Deborah, do you understand that? Half of the apartments come in the back, and the other half come in the front.
Are you being access to the building itself? Apartment, how are they getting into the building?
Access by pedestrian traffic, by sidewalks.
No, there's more than one entrance to the building.
Yes, yes, is that what you're saying?
Get into the apartments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missen, I misunderstood.
Because I'm looking at the Main Street elevation, but I don't see where it would be.
Yeah, there's, there's an entrance to the back of the building here. There's stairs right here.
And that takes you to the, the apartments in the back, in the rear, if you look at the plan?
Thank you, Jay.
Then you come to the front, and it takes you to the apartments in the front area.
Yes.
So, if, if you all- Excuse me, Mr. Owen. If you look at the exhibit that Mr. Owen submitted tonight, it looks something like this. You can see that on the floor plan, on the right-hand side, the first floor plan, the, there is double-opening doors in the front, and there are double-opening doors to a stairwell in the rear.
Thank you, Jay. Just for the record, I would like to, the handouts that I have, would, I'd like to include those into the permanent record also, just in case they did not get into your package. I think they did, but I would like to include that.
Mr. Owens, you submitted this as well?
Yes, I did.
So, but, and then, this is the proposed-
That's correct.
Development, this has nothing, this is just for perspective, or to give a sense of-
That's just for perspective. And there are, the, the other sheet shows pictures of other, other properties along that side of the street in Paradise Green, just for further perspective.
And this is existing retail, or something?
That's existing retail, yes.
If you were to play around with the roof lines, and drop it two or three feet, I'm, what I'm trying to do is make it easier on you, would you, would it still stick up above the buildings, the, I'm saying the subway buildings, because the dress shop building-
Not, not very much.
So, that might end up making those buildings more private, in terms of the, the public response to how that is affecting their visual-
We can certainly lower the pitch, and put that cowboy front.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
That it would make this much more unobtrusive
Okay.
Visually, and in, in essence, make it a much more private kind of compound, that a lot of our concerns is, is this gonna add to our redevelopment plans for Main Street, Paradise Green area, or is it gonna detract from it? So, if you can do that, and if you can focus on still doing, I don't, I don't know where you get the cowboy from, but if you can do some, still do things to make the front facade look like it fits more within, I'm gonna say across the street, and I know you're gonna say, "What?" But, we're trying very hard to make that be a semi-urban shopping, living area, where people can get on their bikes and ride to the train station. Now, I know you might laugh about that, but we have huge numbers of people riding their bikes already. Once we get our greenway in there, that's gonna triple and quadruple. That's gonna make your units be something that 20-somethings are gonna love, the idea of living there.
Mr. Chairman, we, I understand what you're saying. We designed, or redesigned that front, consistent with what the Architectural Review Committee wanted.
Okay.
That's, that's how we did it.
But, you put shutters, so, you got the last.
I'll go up there and remove them if I have to. Thank you, guys.
And, did you ever hear from any of the, our conservation, Kelly, in terms of greenery and all of that?
Yes.
Did she sign a statement?
No, what, what she wants us to do is, when we get ready, she wants us to give us, she wants us to give her a call, to give her a design, and she will come out and take a look to see if what we propose is shrubbery that she agrees with. If not, we will be consistent with whatever she says.
And, I'm gonna go back to the, again, the, the point of the, of the one inch, in terms of the pervious pavements. I know it's not cheap, but I assume you're gonna have to be repaving and doing everything there already. Jay, how do we handle if it's 92, and we're trying to look for something closer to 80?
You just stipulate with the condition of, with a condition of approval for the text amendment, that the impervious area maximum is 80 percent, and then for the site plan review, you just stipulate the maximum impervious area allowed is 80 percent, and then they can figure it out, how they wanna engineer it.
And if they can't meet that, then they'll have to come back and negotiate that with you?
Correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
You know my feelings on that.
I know, but
Okay.
You've gotten a lot here, so-
This is a give and take, I mean, we came a long way from that-
We're moving you into the 21st century.
All right, there we go. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Do you have any questions, Patricia? Okay. Did you want to, Mr. Bellis, give a closing?
No, I think, no, I think you understand the project. I, I don't need to keep you any longer.
Oh, anybody in favor or opposition? I will say it twice, seeing as there being no one here to comment, I will entertain a motion to close our open hearing.
Mr. Chairman, make a, make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I need a motion to open our administrative hearing, meeting. I don't need it? I always thought I did. Okay, we're now gonna open our administrative, and as everybody's aware, we only have these three items on the discussion. We're gonna start with the first one, there are three, one of them, one is the text, right? Correct, Jay? We should do the text first? There is the text amendment.
And, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation, just how we typically do these three-pronged applications, is to discuss and vote on each one of them separately. So, you can discuss the merits of the text amendment, and then vote on it, and then move on to the zone change, and then move on to the site plan review.
Okay, so, I need to find the-
Just while everyone's looking through their documentation, I'll just remind everybody, the text amendment, because of the unfavorable recommendation, requires four votes in the affirmative for an approval.
Not the site plan review.
And that's the direction of you all, if you would like me to reiterate a recommendation based on the modifications, I'm happy to do so.
I am looking for, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the text amendment.
So, they handed it in.
I had it, and I lost it again.
And I gave you one with my-
Is this the, okay, all right, fine, here it is here. All right, we're now gonna go to the text amendment? Is there anybody here as, will someone go to the minutes? Give me a motion to take it off, no, there, yes, give me a motion to take, can we do all three at one time?
I would do them individually.
Okay. I need someone to read the text amendment, and vote to take it off the table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take text amendment, petition of T. and J. Realty Incorporated and Blake Stratford LLC, seeking to create a new Section 28 title, Paradise Green District, to allow for construction of a 12-unit affordable housing development in a CA zone.
Off the table?
Off the table.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, second, sorry. Deborah? Discussion? Discussion.
Correct, the amended text amendment that was submitted into the record by the applicant this evening.
On October 24th, 25th, this evening's meeting.
So the amended text amendment dated October 24, 2023 at 2:21 PM.
Okay.
If the commission would like me to walk you through their changes, I'm happy to do so.
Why don't we let Jay explain what changed in this?
And I'll be able to do this quickly. So on page two, one of my staff comments recommended that they have a qualified independent firm be the administrator. They made that change. On page three, Section 28.4, they included three properties as part of this project. That was a typographical error. I recommended that they change it to only include 3589 Main Street, which they did, so we're good there. I recommended the dumpster enclosure with opaque fencing. They made that change, so we're good there. One of the changes that they did not make was the impervious area. My suggestion was reducing that down to 80%. And so my recommendation is that you all condition that Section 28.7.1 impervious area maximum be...
Are you getting that or do we, here, go back?
Be 80%. And I can repeat this.
Okay.
The recommendation is the maximum impervious area be 80%. The next item, 28.8.2...
Oh, Jay, we did say though that they could do a combination of containment and impervious?
I think, that is going to be hard for me to calculate here on the spot. I think that we make them do the required, the minimum requirement of a half-inch of stormwater and that the impervious area be a maximum of 80%. And then you will, in the site plan review, you will, I recommend a condition that it complies with the MS4. All three of these conditions are going to take care of everything that we all expect.
And let me ask our counsel, that is perfectly okay under 230G, correct? Connecticut's water standards and...
Yes, I would say that's a public health and safety issue.
Yeah, that's a public health, so we're absolutely okay doing it.
Right, plus, I mean, they're asking for, you don't even really need a text amendment for 8-30G, but they're asking for it and there's going to be specific terms in it and they're going to want to, they want that so that they have something to comply with, a regulation, and so it's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to comment without making a motion. There's an awful lot of stipulations that are going to go along if we approve this, okay? I'd like to, we're having a meeting on November 8th, Jay?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to just, my personal opinion is, without making a motion, is we just leave it till November 8th and then act on it. There's an awful lot of, I mean, there's an awful lot of stipulations. We want to make sure we get them right. It's only two weeks away till the next meeting, so...
Then let me ask, I don't want to throw all this on Jay, but is this something that you would prepare us a memo? But you need to know whether we are looking for something favorable or looking for something not favorable before we ask Jay to do any kind of research or...
What I'm asking to do without making a motion is that we, I didn't make the motion, is we let the three of them go till the 8th and then we act on it. In other words, we leave them on the table to make it clear.
So I'm certainly happy to prepare a memo for the commission. There is only one recommended change to this text amendment and it's that impervious area. They essentially have handled everything else. But it's whatever you all decide to do, I'm happy to prepare a memo.
And the roof, the roof, lowering the roof height?
Well, that's the next application.
That's the next application, okay. So theoretically, that's the only thing that's there? The one point that we're asking for in this text amendment?
And Commissioner Petroselli, I'll add that we do have a busy agenda next month, just forewarned.
So if we can accept that, then we can accept the rest of it? All right, that's true. What other information do you need, Lenny? No, I understand. Listen, we're sitting here trying to say yes to this when every single board that we rely upon for our wisdom has essentially said no. So we need to come to terms with, have they met those conditions? Did they meet enough of planning's conditions? Did they meet enough of ARB's conditions in order for us to say yes? We don't need to pay as much attention to their saying no to this project. We can make our own decision based on what they have managed to turn around and respond to. Looking at the text amendment, there's only one thing that's outstanding. Well, let me ask Jay that.
Yeah, I would say that if you're prepared to vote... Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Petroselli is right. You wouldn't approve the text amendment and the zone change if you're not going to approve the site plan review. What I would say is that, just so you all understand what conditions are kind of on the table that we're talking about, there's one condition of approval for the text amendment, no conditions of approval for the zone change, and then a handful of my recommendations that are laid out in my staff comments and three or four more that I think probably could be changed based on the testimony tonight. And I would just, I don't want to tell you to vote tonight or vote next month. It doesn't matter to me. But it is only 7:15. It might be time, and we do have a busy month next, next month. I'll just, that's all I'll say. I think it's manageable, the conditions tonight, but you may need the time to see that written down. So I certainly appreciate Commissioner Petroselli's...
We're not making a decision right here. Let me ask Jay one, one further thing. How much of this, how much of the text amendment and, and the, the second item are 830G dependent?
None of them are.
Okay, so there's, this is just...
This is purely for financing. They, they propose a text amendment that the project fits in perfectly with so that when they're applying to finance the project with a bank, they can say, "We have a legal and completely conforming project." It just makes it easier to get the money to build it.
So the Paradise Green...
We don't need it. 830G does not require a text amendment and zone change.
Okay, and the Paradise Green development is not 830G? It's just that 830G...
It is, and it is an 8-30G. The site plan review is the 8-30G component of this. The text amendment and the zone change are just the financing strategy, I, I, that's my understanding of it. It's the financing strategy for the applicant. All they need to do really by, by state law is submit the site plan review.
Let, here, go ahead.
In fact, even if you denied the text amendment, you would still look at the site plan. It just wouldn't be conforming with zoning. You'd just be approving the project under 8-30G, which really busts zoning. As long as it's not a public health and safety issue, they're entitled to a project however they, you know, however many units they propose. As long as it's not a public health and safety issue, then you're either giving it an approval or you're going to get reversed when you take it to court. The text amendment is really, it's also just so they can come in and say, "Okay, here we've got, we've got a text amendment, so our project just has to conform to the regulation that we've already, we've already developed." But, so that, that's unusual because normally if you had a text amendment, if the text amendment didn't pass, you wouldn't move on to the site plan. But in 8-30G, you would, so...
Does that help you any? Well, I'm going to ask Jim and Deborah, how do you feel?
My, my sense is that with the amended, you know, text amendment, it's pretty clear what they're agreeing to. And as Mr. Hibanski said, with, with the conditions for approval that we're requiring, you know, that, that seems to me that it's going to comply or it's going to address the concerns that the planning and zoning staff have, have brought, brought forward.
Yes, Ms. Manos, comment? No, 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 I was coming to her. I, I was coming to her. No, we're looking for a vote, so, any questions? Deborah?
So, to be clear, I mean, the recommendations that are not made. One was the impervious area, which we said would be 80%. They didn't want to do the electric charging stations and, you know, so they didn't want that one. And what I don't understand is recommendation not made for the standards for site plan approval? Why was that not?
So that's typically when someone submits a site plan review to us, that is the criteria by which they need to submit. We expect there to be, we want to see who the property owners on the adjacent properties, what the zones are. And it just gives a lot more information for staff and commissioners on these plans. Now, that's what we want to see. Now, the applicant has really addressed a lot of those things verbally and kind of anecdotally on the record here. So that's more of what just, I mean, I told them that probably eight months ago, that's how we wanted it. They didn't do it that way. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's how we expect to see them. But I would, that's not a huge issue that this project did not meet those standards right now. We, the commission has enough information based on the testimony that that's not a concern for me, whether or not they included that.
Okay.
Lenny? This is a, this is a vote that requires four, correct? Because it's a text change. So I will entertain motions. All we're voting on is the text amendment right now.
I make a motion to approve the text amendment as amended.
With Jay's amendment?
With Jay's amendments, yes.
With the modification to Section 28.7.1 with the pervious, maximum pervious area to be set at 80%.
Yep.
And that's all, that's my only recommended, recommended change.
Yep.
Do we need to discuss this? Are you going to second it? Yeah, we do. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Well, I, I, you know, I think Mr. Owens made a, you know, kind of compelling argument about, or, or presentation about, you know, for his client, but I think also that he's, you know, shown a willingness to meet the concerns that the zoning commission or the zoning administrator has for this project. And if we include conditions for approval for the maximum impervious area, you know, even as he testified that everything is paved there, you know, I think it's time to start to transition away from that. So, so he can be a trendsetter, right? We can, this project can be the one that we can point to and say, "Even Mr. Owens, you know, put in impervious material." So, you know, with that as part of the condition for approval, I would be, you know, I think it's a, we, we get what we want from this text amendment.
Lenny? Do you have anything, Linda?
No, I agree.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
I just have to add that you are going to vote in the affirmative.
Yeah.
You would have to state your reason that the modified text amendment you feel is consistent, now consistent with the POCD.
Someone want, you want to amend your... Or do we need, do we just need a motion? We have a motion. We need to amend it to say that, to add that it is consistent with the POCD. Jim? Okay, sorry. To include, yes. You're, you're just modifying to... Just add the reason that it is, with the change, it is consistent with the POCD.
Okay, so once again, I made a motion to accept the text amendment with the Jay's recommendations in his amended, in the amended motion and that it is consist, the changes are consistent with the POCD.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do a vote, I mean, a vote. Aye. Linda, Harold, aye. Jim, aye.
Aye.
Deborah, aye. Lynn, no, so it's four, zero.
Four, one.
I mean, four, one, I'm sorry. So that passes. We can now go on to the second text, the second piece. Deborah, can you read that second one? Or I can, I, it's right here. 3589 Main Street petition TJ Realty Inc. and Blake Stratford LLC seeking a change of zone from a CA to a Paradise Green District. We need to take it off, move to take it off the table. Aye.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, discussion.
Just be sure you state a reason, the same reason if you vote in the affirmative.
That it's, that it's consistent with the POCD?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to turn this over to ask Jay to comment for us, if that's possible.
Sure, so I'll just lay it out, similar to the text amendment. The zoning, the planning commission gave an unfavorable recommendation based on submitted, based on their modifications to the text amendment. The text in your prior vote, the text amendment appears now to be consistent with the POCD. Therefore, the zone change would be consistent with the POCD.
Okay, discussion. Len? Deborah? Jim?
Well, as stated, because the text amendment appears consistent with the plan of conservation and development, that it would make sense that the site and review would as well. The site, the zone change would be consistent as well. So, so changing it from, what, to, to the Paradise Green? The CA, yeah. So the, yeah, the CGS in a CA zone, is that right?
They're changing from a CA to a Paradise Green.
Paradise Green develop, District. So since the text, yeah, so it all appears to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Discussion? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, seeing how everything seems to, now appears to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development, I make a motion to approve the zoning change.
Second?
Second.
Linda, what? Yes, except after discussing it, Jim made a motion. So we messed up again.
How actually did it, because it was the only thing Jim made, to take it off the table.
To take it off the table, we discussed it, and now he made a motion after discussing it, that it conforms with the P O C D. So now we're at the point of any other discussion? And if there isn't, hearing no other discussion, will someone move this?
We have a first, and I believe we have a second, Commissioner Manos.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Deborah? Lenny? No?
Aye.
Aye, aye, four to one. Okay, the third piece. 3589 Main Street petition of T. and J. Realty Inc. and Blake Stratford LLC seeking a site plan review under the proposed 28 to construct a two-and-a-half-story, 12-unit housing development pursuant to 830G of the C G S in a C.A. zone. Now, that's not correct, though, right? If we?
Now you've moved it to the other zone.
Now it's in the other zone, but we had to advertise it as the.
So now, we'll have to do that as one of the changes to it, okay. Motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second, you second.
We don't, we just need a second?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion.
Second?
Oh, sorry. And that, we don't need a vote, okay?
Yeah, we need a vote.
Oh, and a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Okay. Now, once again, we're going to make, I'm going to turn to Jay again, because we're going to rely upon his staff report.
So there are just, there's one item that I just need clarification on before I can lay out the recommended conditions of approval, and it's whether or not you all want to require the electric vehicle charging stations. I mean, it's just a recommendation, I don't think it's imperative to the project, I think it's nice to have that. I cannot confirm that it's $45,000 to install that. You may want to require one, you may want to require none. I don't think it's detrimental, if you decided we don't want to require any, it would not be detrimental, I think, to the site. So, once I have clarity on that, then I'm happy to run through the, just the handful of conditions that we have.
In discussions on the rewriting our zoning regs, we are talking about rewriting our zoning regs to say that all parking lots in Stratford have to have chargers. We haven't defined it beyond that yet, but that is, that is what's happening in every town.
But you don't know if that's going to pass.
No, we don't know.
Right.
Anything else?
You all can just decide whether or not you want to include that as a condition, whether it's two, one, or zero.
Two, one, or zero, discussion?
Even though I'm probably not, I'm just not comfortable with this project right now, but I would say zero.
Yeah, yes.
Linda?
None.
We still need four, right, even for this?
We're just voting on a condition of approval to include.
Okay.
So I think it's just a simple majority. We vote on this one thing, is that?
Yeah, so that Jay knows whether to include it or not.
Then I move that there should be zero.
We ready to vote? Anybody second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No.
I make a motion that we require, as a condition of approval, we require one. Nice compromise.
Second?
Second.
Okay, do we need to discuss this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
After what?
No.
Aye, three, you said no?
No.
Okay, so it's three, two in favor of it, okay.
So now I can run down the recommended conditions, and there really aren't too many. Most of them are standard.
And Jay, is this, is this your October 4th?
That's where I'm going to pull, that's where I'm going to pull most of them.
And you're on page three.
Are already in my staff comments, and there are several of them that I think are worthy of amending, based on testimony and conversation that I heard this evening. And you all may disagree, but I'll just lay them out so you can make that determination. So.
May I point something out to you?
Before you go, say it. So that's what the M S four will require.
Will require, okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, all recommendations made by the planning and zoning administrator in their staff memorandum dated October 4th, 2023, shall be followed, except number four, which shall now state only one E.V. charging station is required. A walkway from the rear to the front of the building shall be installed on the south side of the building between 3589 and the address, I believe, to the south is 3555, which the applicant, I believe, agreed to.
That's the five feet that they managed to stretch another foot out of, okay?
All recommendations made by the Architectural Review Board, except items number one and number two, which involve shifting the building around to accommodate for various things. They're just not going to be able to do that, based on the discussion that was had by the commission this evening. And that will modify the issue of the flat roof, the gable roof, the parapet. It should now read, the recommendation and condition shall now read, any pitched roof shall be fully concealed from public view behind a parapitied cornice to mimic the suggested design and visual example as recommended by the Architectural Review Board on April 17th.
Is that only on the front of the building?
So, it just needs to be concealed from public view. So, they may, they may determine they're going to have to wrap the whole thing in this faux parapet wall with their pitched roof back behind it, they may only have to do a little section that's visible. So, it's really up to the applicant and how they want to turn the dials on the design. So, the last one is just to reiterate the condition of approval for the text amendment, the maximum impervious area shall be 80%, and the applicant can design in how they want to do that, either it's impervious space, impervious parking, extra landscaping, they can figure out a way to make that work. Those are all, all the conditions that I recommend.
And the bike is already in?
Oh.
The bikes are already in there, the bike racks are?
Yep, bike racks are already in there. So, and Attorney Sullivan mentioned the M S four, those are my standard conditions of approval that were in here. I'm happy to read those out just quickly into the record so that you understand what they are. Bicycle racks shall be installed to hold up the 10 bicycles, as stated in my report. Parking surfaces shall be reconstructed and resurfaced and restripped to formalize parking. The applicant, I'll skip that one, because we modified, they're installing only one electric vehicle charging station. The project, the applicant shall obtain a letter from a licensed engineer ensuring the project's compliance with the town's M S four stormwater permit. This letter shall be delivered and emailed to the Office of Planning and Zoning and kept in the applicant's file. Number six addresses the Architectural Review Board comments. The applicant shall receive, number seven, the applicant shall receive a letter from the Conservation Superintendent that they are satisfied with the proposed planting selection. Number eight, all necessary celtation and erosion controls shall be in place and the zoning enforcement officer notified for an inspection prior to any site work or construction being performed. And lastly, immediate onsite modification shall be employed when an erosion problem develops. That's everything.
And things like the A R Bs insisting on change in lighting.
That's part of it.
Deborah, do you want to make this motion? And Jay, you have?
Do I have to read the whole, the whole thing again? Do you want me to do that?
Confirm with Attorney Sullivan, I think you can say, you know.
Site plan review, kind of, approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you're asking.
Here, maybe I can find it.
No, I have it in front of me.
Okay, yeah, read, read the.
So, motion to approve 3589 Main Street petition of T.N.G. Realty Inc. and Blake Stratford LLC seeking a site plan review under the proposed section 28 to construct a two-and-a-half-story, 12-unit housing development pursuant to section 830G of the G, C G S in a C.A. zone.
So I would just say that it's now in a Paradise Green zone.
Paradise Green, okay. Paradise, in a.
Does that make sense?
C G S in a Paradise Green zone, yep, because I know we changed the name, okay.
It's the new zone, the Paradise Green District.
With, okay, so, with Mr. Hervansky's amendments, and the changes are consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
We can just vote, we don't need to discuss. All in favor?
Request a roll call.
Mr. Petrotelli?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Harold, yes, five, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not going to say anything up here, but replace that ugly fence.
It will be repaired.
Put in a nice decorative, something that looks like it belongs in paradise.
Bike racks.
I want the best bike racks that you can imagine.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more thing to do. Yeah, that's what I'm doing, we, we need someone, Deborah, can you approve the minutes for last?
Motion to approve the minutes from September.
Second?
Second.
Sorry.
I wasn't here, so I can't second.
All in favor, it's three, it's three to, she can't vote, and he can't vote.
Oh.
Because they weren't here.
No, and he can't vote.
Oh, Linda, you were here, okay, so Linda can vote, but Lenny, you can't.
I can vote, I just want a second.
But you weren't here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
Who seconded it, I thought Jim did.
I wasn't here.
Oh, you're right, Linda, seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay, great, fabulous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only other, the last two items is, we're going to, we can move down to number eight, and this is regarding the planning and zoning staff and our consultant for the zoning regulations update project. Just as a very brief update, planning and zoning staff had a three-and-a-half-hour work session with our consultant, going over the format and condensing of the regulations and reorganizing where things are. The best way to describe our zoning regulations are, they're the junk drawer in the kitchen. It's just everything is all over the place. So we spent about three-and-a-half hours really organizing where everything's going to go, and condensing the regulations from 33 sections to now seven more interpretable sections where everything will neatly fall under, making it easier for staff to interpret these regs, residents, and the developers that are coming in. So, the plan is for us to meet maybe on Octo, I'm sorry, November 20th. We are ahead of schedule right now, the, we were originally anticipating having this annotated outline for year-all review after the new year, but we've been able to make some good headway on it, and we think that it might be a good idea to kind of get this blessed, at least the formatting of what it's going to look like. We're not making any material changes, not changing any sections other than, this is the new organization, for staff and our consultant to really hit the ground running during the holiday season, when no one wants to meet after Thanksgiving and Christmas, but, and that way we can run and do our work and be ready for our roundtable workshop in January or February. So, I wanted to float the idea of a one-hour administrative-only meeting on November 20th in this room. I know Commissioner Petroselli mentioned that could we add it on towards the November 8th meeting, our next public hearing? We do have a number of items, and my concern is that we do pay the consultant, and so if we make them wait for, you know, a few hours, we'll be paying them to just sit here. So is everyone in agreement that we can meet on the 20th for one hour to just, you guys can look at what we're proposing?
And we know he's pretty fast, he gets through stuff. Jay's already said he will send it out to us the week before.
No, of course not, never.
And so that's on a Monday, we typically don't meet on Mondays, that Monday, the 20th, is good at 6:00?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, we'll book that and confirm, I'll send out a formal email reminding everybody. And as Chairman Watson said, I'll have, I'll have a draft for everyone to review long ahead, it's essentially done now, we're ready to send it out. So that's great.
Before we close, oh, oh, sorry, keep going.
And so the last item on the administrative agenda is the schedule, calendar of meetings for the 24, 2024 calendar year. You know, I put together a draft schedule of meetings, typically when we have our, typically when we meet, keeping the 6:00 P.M. meeting schedule, which appears to work until, unless I hear otherwise.
So it's going to mirror, mirror this year, except it'll be a 6:00 meeting, it won't be special meetings anymore.
Twice a month, the second Wednesday and the fourth or last Wednesday for our public hearing, and no other changes. I tried to get everything around the federal holidays, and we don't have to vote tonight, if you want to look at it to confirm that it works, otherwise you can approve it.
I would approve it, because it's going to just mirror this year with the 6:00 start time. That's fine, I make a motion, we approve it.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's it, right, I, no, I have one thing, I want to, everybody's supposed to have four-and-a-half hours of training by the end of this year. Some of, some of the.
There's no more classes.
Some of the land board members are not going to be here because their terms are up, and we're also getting in a whole new bunch of five or six new members. What Lenny, Len and I have discovered is that, he discovered it and told me about it, is that a lot of towns in Connecticut simply hired the guy to come to them, and they did the whole four-and-a-half hours on one Saturday.
Yeah, the ship has sailed on that option, because there are, every municipality has essentially booked them, they've already sent out emails, we have a planner's listserv of emails, they've already, Yukon Clear, who I usually, they come to train us for free, I set that up every, every year, usually, they're booked, so they're not offering any more trainings, so.
I thought they were going to try to offer one in 2024.
That's what I'm saying.
They are, they're going to try to offer one early, yeah, in 2024, for any existing -- and new commissioners, for this year, everyone is still required four hours. I believe the all-encompassing training that offered all four credits that you all need, they're-
They are.
Commissioner Petroselli and, and Mr. Chairman, you all confirmed, they're booked.
Yeah.
But they are going to try to post it on their website, a Zoom recording, that you all can attest, screenshot it-
Yeah, they made it very clear that-
That you have gone to it, and then I can report your hours, because I've got to bring this report to the town council to say, you know, five members did it and one didn't, or whatever it is.
I got an email saying that this will be recorded this Saturday, so that will be something theoretically that everybody can go, you might be able to do that, Lenny, even, sit in front of a- sit in front of a monitor and do it. They sent this, they sent this dictatorial thing saying, we're going to know when you come, when you eat lunch, and when you leave, in order for you to get a certificate. So they're really like, okay. So anyhow, it, what she had said was that it would be after, in, after January.
And it's unfortunate, but it's going to be offered probably after the, my required time to report to the town council, so if we, I'm, I'm going to push to see if we can get a digital recording of it for all, you all to review, and then just send me an email independently that says, Dear Jay, I have completed the hours, here is a link to the, the workshop that I attended that covers all four, and at least you've made a fair, at least you've made a fair effort at doing it.
They're recording it, so I will come back with information about if it's going to be available, Jay, so I'll know, I'll tell you Monday.
So I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Seeing no other items on our agenda, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Linda? Rich? Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.